Awesome, but we're writing on that.
Well, the order is the Department of City Council, there are going to be more meetings for this.
Schwartz.
Here.
Member Karen.
Here.
Member Gates.
Here.
Member Traver.
Here.
Member Underhill.
Here.
Member Wolfersburger.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. This time I'll introduce Phil Cole from April Grove Bible Church for invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
That's great. Dear Lord, I give great thanks for our country and our wonderful city, and we're here on behalf of it. I thank you for these that we have selected to lead us, and I pray upon them air all wisdom, not just tonight, but in all their considerations and votes, you give them great, great wisdom with all their expertise and what they know that they would have even a wisdom that's even greater than what they possess, and we lean on you for that. I pray for just listening hearts, even to the community and to each other, each of the council members. But we are mindful that while peacemaking is the responsibility of all, let us seek that and do deport our way in a manner that is helpful. But it's not just peacemaking, it's decision making. And Lord, we always look for the perfect, but if we don't find it, let us do not what is good, but let us do what is best for the most, and this is beyond us, this is beyond all. So I pray for the council meeting tonight. I pray for all wisdom for them, blessings on their lives and blessings on our city. And we pray it in your great name. Amen. If you would to the flag, your right hand over your hearts, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Under item six, we have public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes. Comments shall address agenda item topics. Public hearing items should be addressed during the public hearing portion under item ten of the meeting agenda. Non-agenda items shall be addressed during the public comment, non-agenda items, item fourteen portion of the meeting agenda. Then under item seven, we have our consent agenda. Under A, city council minutes, B, city bills, C, Cronin application for the athletic field expansion, under D, special event request, Mandy Run, Michigan five K run, E, special event request for the chicken barbecue, F, special event request for the fountain story series, story time series, excuse me, G, special event request behind the illusions. That brings us down to item ten, public hearing and subsequent council action. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes per the public hearing. And we'll be discussing item A, shared space grant program application. Under twelve A, we have one seventeen East Michigan Avenue Oprah set a public hearing. Under B, the Northwest Neighborhood Improvement Authority Notice of Intent to Sell Bonds. Under twelve C, Michigan Public Act one fifty-two hard cap exemption. Under twelve D, Liquor Control Commission Banquet Facility Permit Application for Schuler's Restaurant. Under E, directional boring for major site electrical distribution extension. Then we go, we'll move to item fourteen, public comment on non-agenda items. Person addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Comments shall address non-agenda item topics. Public hearing items would have been held during the portion under item ten, and agenda items should have been addressed during the public comment agenda items under item six. Then we'll have council and manager communication. Under sixteen, we will go to closed session pursuant to section eight A of the Open Meetings Act to consider periodic personnel evaluation of an employee. The named individual requests a closed meeting. Sixteen A, which will be a city manager review. Seventeen, post-closed session action to consider potential action items following the closed session. A, the city manager employment agreement, and then item eighteen is our adjournment. And I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor. Support?
A motion by council member Wolfersburger, supported by council member Karen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item six, public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes. Comments shall address the agenda item topics. Public hearing items shall be addressed during the public hearing portion, item ten of the meeting agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda item? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Excuse me, I have a toothache. I was just curious. I was looking over the agenda, and I noticed that the city is putting a lot of money into electrical out there at the major. And I also noticed in the advisor this week that there was a detailed article that I read in regards to electrical rates, utility rates that the city provides, which I am happy to read because I had known that, but it just verified what I had investigated when I went through the minutes. Now, I'm trying to be a responsible citizen and learn about my city, which I was not prior to ever, to be honest. So I'm ashamed to say I'm learning a lot, but how is, can you, where do I go to find a committee that outlines the expenditures that the city is taking over? Who's covering those? Or is it the utility customers? Because as my understanding, the city is going to be making money off the wastewater in the utilities out there. So why are our rates increasing? Just, I don't, I look through the website, I've asked questions to people, and nobody seems to know. So if anybody can direct me to the proper minutes, council committee, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we get your name and address, please? Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on agenda items? Yes, sir.
Barry Wayne Adams, six twenty-two West Green Street. First, my objection to the previous minutes, the minutes of last meeting, for the same reason. You do not write down the substance of the public comments. And you used to, if you go back, even at the time of the night of the long meeting, you made the effort to put in, you know, even though it was in a synoptic form, a breakdown of the substance of each person's comments. And when you start doing this and just say that somebody came up and gave a public comment, somebody came up and gave a public comment, again, it's moving to the ridiculous. An example of the ridiculousness is, you know, when you come up and this is supposed to be comment on agenda items. Well, according to your document, this is the city council agenda, and there are eighteen items on the agenda. It's not public comment on consent agenda, it's public comment on agenda items. And actually, there's an illogical loop here, because I could come up and I want to comment on item fourteen on non-agenda items. So this is the kind of ridiculous authoritarian-esque attempt to try to modify our ability and restrict our ability to make meaningful comment to our local government. Now, we look at the breakdown of expenditures and, you know, in a very minimal form. But as we're finding out, there's a much greater aspect to the economics of the city business. Because there's the thing called the comprehensive annual financial report, which actually gives the full and complete breakdown of the city's finances. And what we're finding out is these municipalities have just taken a little focus on a small part of what they call the budget, while they still have all kinds of assets and stock portfolios and other sources of revenues, which are not being used to provide services to the citizens. But yet, you keep coming to us, asking for more and more and more, which are routinely rejected. I mean, you know, when are you going to stop on this school bond stuff? But this is part of the fraud that we're discovering, and we will expose it in its entirety. And the waiver toward it is still in effect.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on agenda items? Seeing none, that moves us to item seven, our consent agenda. Under item seven A is our city council minutes, regular session, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Seven B, our city bill, purchases on five seventeen twenty twenty-four in the amount of seventy-eight thousand one hundred and five dollars and sixty-three cents, followed by purchases on five twenty-one twenty twenty-four in the amount of five thousand forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Purchases on five twenty-four twenty twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. Purchases on six four twenty twenty-four in the amount of thirty thousand forty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents for a total of three hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Under item seven C is a Cronin grant application, athletic fields extension. That will be a three hundred thousand dollar grant application through the Cronin. Under item seven D is a special event request, Mandy Runs Michigan Five K Run, which will be July twenty-first. Beginning at five P M and ending approximately eight thirty P M. Under item E is a special event request for our chicken barbecue for the Fourth of July. Under F, a special event request, fountain story time series, which is in the month of July and August by the Marshall Public Library. Be held at the fountain between eleven A M and twelve P M. And item G, seven G, is special event request, Behind the Illusion, which will occur on July thirtieth between twelve and three P M down at the Magic Museum. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion by council member Jacob Gates, supported by council member Teresa Chaney-Huggett. Roll call, please.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Chaney-Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Traver. Member Underhill.
Yes.
Member Wolfersburger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to item ten, public hearing and subsequent council action. Persons wishing to address city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes per the public hearing. It's a reference, item ten A, shared spaces grant application. Eric, want to give some information?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Steph has been, was made aware of this grant a few weeks back, actually probably in April now. And it's a two hundred thousand dollar no match grant that is MDOT have put out to encourage communities to make their, make themselves more walkable and more bikeable and transit micro mobility friendly. So Steph has been working on ideas related to this grant and trying to put our best foot forward. Two hundred thousand dollars only goes so low, you know. It takes a lot more to build a lot of these projects than two hundred thousand dollars. So we really tried to target it in those things that we could be quick and effective at, which is what the grant's looking at. There is also aspects of the grant that promote environmental justice and other poverty type related standards that really target property south of Michigan Avenue, the opportunity zone. There's a census tract that meets those standards. So we started looking, I started specifically looking in that area to see what could we target, because that's going to, once you we're going to score the best, we're going to put our best foot forward and try to bring more money back to the community. As I mentioned in my report, you know, we looked at the existing Riverwalk. We looked at the extension of the Riverwalk, which is not going to get us very far in that one, so that one kind of went by the wayside. We looked at up on the Northeast NIA, getting sidewalked to Gordon Elementary, which is a priority project, but once again, wrong side of town to score the highest we can on the project. So one of the projects that we have talked about for a while that came up during the ULI presentation was to better connect our Riverwalk, our river district with our downtown. So staff has a proposal from E and G, one of our consulting engineers, to add a ten-foot wide path from the Riverwalk to downtown. We are doing, we're going to do our best to keep everything right around that two hundred thousand dollar mark. We have made us provided a nine thousand dollar donation, ten thousand for benches and planners. Part of the Ford money that was donated for trees, we're using to replant trees in this area. Obviously, some people need to come out. We're leaving the largest palm tree in the county alone, though. We're going around that, so we're not an issue. So we're requesting permission to put in the application for South Calmazoo Non-Motorized Connector from the Riverwalk to Fountain Circle for this grant program. I did, did fill in mention, we also looked at, and we've been talking to MDOT about traffic coming into downtown, so we were looking at different ideas related to that. Unfortunately, we're just not ready for that project of this grant program. So from a timing standpoint, we can be most effective and meet the grant requirements by the South Calmazee project, which is up on the screen. So. So I have for that one.
Again, Barry Wayne Adams, six twenty-two West Green Street. This time I won't be the cranky old man. I fully encourage a development of infrastructure that facilitates the use of bicycles. Bicycles actually, in the long run, are going to be the real solution. Now, it's only because of, you know, the seductions of marketing and advertising, plus the human need or not need, but preference for convenience over actually having to, you know, do the harder effort. That at some point, even, you know, the E V stuff has already fallen apart, but even over time, the internal combustion engine modality will finally peter out. And, well, it may not, but we just won't be using it from petrochemical sources. But in spite of that, the, you know, the bicycle is the most efficient machine ever, complex machine ever invented by man. You know, I've, I've been bicycling since I've been, you know, six, seven years old. I've bicycled over thirty thousand miles, attained the level of effective bicyclist by the League of American Wheelmen, and got SNCOG certification for bicycle traffic instruction, how to ride on the roads and that kind of stuff. So I fully encourage this kind of development. This is actually a development that will move people towards health and well-being and economy in their lives. You know, you don't have to waste all kinds of money trying to get to and fro. If you've got a, if you have a nice bicycle, you know, it's always nice to ride a well-built bicycle than a piece of junk, but fully developed city, and this is a perfect-sized city for that kind of development. You know, you can get to anywhere in town on a bicycle within, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes. And, you know, more people riding on the bicycles would mean a healthier marshal. So I'm not chewing you out this time. You know, go ahead with it, and let's see it happen. And if you need any help with developing a, you know, high school or junior high school bicycle traffic training program, let me talk to you real clear.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing. Subsequent council comment, question?
This idea has been part of our, you know, visioning process for a long time, and so having the opportunity to apply for this grant to work towards that is a great idea, and I appreciate staff working, working to get this done in a quick timeframe.
Yeah, I'll second that, Eric. And thank you so much for putting the effort to figure out, you know, where this could best fit. You know, getting, making, making that path down to the Riverwalk areas is more attractive, has definitely been a goal. Thank you.
Okay, that being said, I'll recommend to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, a resolution to authorize an application and implementation of Michigan Shared Street and Space Grant and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Support? Have a motion by council member Karen, supported by council member Wolfersburger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You sign, motion carries. That brings us to item twelve A, one seventeen East Michigan Avenue Oprah set the public hearing. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've done this multiple times. This is the latest development that has been proposed for downtown. This is at the corner of the northwest corner of Madison and Michigan. And what they're looking to do is that two, two bedroom apartments on the second and third floor, so one on each floor. And then actually, it would have a commercial space, which have potentially have been proposed to be a speakeasy-type establishment. First step in the open process is to create a district. So we're recommending that you set up public hearing for June seventeenth to consider creating the said district.
Okay, none.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to set a public hearing for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M to consider the creation of an Oprah District for one seventeen East Michigan Avenue.
Support.
Motion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We bring to you tonight a notice of intent to sell bonds for the Northeast Neighborhood Improvement Authority. If you recall, in twenty twenty-three, there was a development agreement created and agreed to between Briar, between the city and Allen Edwin Homes for the Briar Wood and Valley View subdivisions. These are, these are located within the Northeast NIA. And we have been working with them on their development plans and the infrastructure that goes with those plans, and we are at the point where we are ready to sell bonds. And this is the first step in that process. So this is the notice of intent to sell bonds. We are authorizing a request for two point seven five million dollars, and we are working on finalizing the final bond amount while this notice of intent is being executed. What this does is it starts the forty-five-day referendum process on the bond sale. So by providing this notice, we now start that clock and we wait forty-five days until we come back to you with final bond amount, infrastructure being built with that funding and your request, your approval to sell that bond. At this time, there is no budget impact. If we issue the bonds, like I said, we will come back to you with that amount. And we have been working with our bond attorney and financial consultants to create the intense resolution attached to the report. And that goes through, you know, the the understanding of the infrastructure, where it's going, who's, who the developer is, what the city's responsibility is, all related back to that development agreement. And I think that covers it all. We're happy to take questions.
I do have a couple. With the two point seven five million, the number of houses being that are proposed, what do you anticipate the term of the bond being?
Now we're looking at twenty.
We were looking, ideally, we're looking twelve to fifteen, but I think we would give one up at twenty. With the NIA, you can go to thirty. But that's not our ten at this point. That's why I think we're working through these issues, how much we're going to actually need, and at that point, we'll have a term for you.
So by preference would be shorter, if possible.
Yes, our two.
I'd love to dissolve this TIF as soon as possible, so.
One of the positive things with this, though, is that we are adding it.
Right.
But it's not just the new infrastructure, it's replacing a very poor street.
And this is more personal than, but do you have a timeframe yet on the construction on Forest?
For a street construction, we're still looking to issue bids for construction late this summer, potential start this fall, so. Yep. In addition to man road, there's also a sidewalk as part of our proposal, so the new development, the developer would be responsible for installing sidewalk, but that sidewalk in the current scheme doesn't go anywhere because that neighborhood is very sidewalk poor. So we would be adding sidewalk on streets that are within the NIA but outside the development directly.
I just want to reiterate, this is a maximum amount that this notice of intent would be for, and it doesn't mean that that's the amount that we would actually bond for. The project will be brought back before city council, we would write sides that have that discussion, determine what, what, what scope of the project you want to move forward with before we, obviously, obligated to move forward with bonds. So again, just wanted to clarify. But you get one shot at this, right? So if we were to do use a smaller amount, bids came back higher, then you got to start the process all over again. And as everyone knows, Michigan has a finite construction season, so we got to work within those, those weather dates, so. Just wanted to clarify that.
Very basic question, but right, right now, the revenue from that tax capture is sufficient to pay for the bond service we anticipate?
That would be, that's part of the analysis when we finish the final construction cost is understanding what's, what the tax capture covers, and then in the beginning years, if there's a shortfall, the developer pays that difference. So that's how this.
Forest and Bell. Portion of the costs and sufficient tax to cover it. Then as we add, if we add, we look at what capture comes from others.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion to approve resolution two zero two four dash eighteen, a notice of intent, resolution for capital improvement bond for the Northeast Neighborhood Improvement Authority, infrastructure improvements, and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign and publish the necessary documents.
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion by Have a motion by council member Wolfersberger, supported by council member Gates. Can I get a roll call, please?
Member Chaney Huggit.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill. For Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to item twelve C, Michigan Public Act one fifty-two hard cap exemption. City manager?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Twelve C item, this is an, this is an item you see on an annual basis. Under Public Act one fifty-two of two thousand and eleven, public employers are limited to the amount of healthcare that they can pay for their employees. Typically, it's set eight, the employees responsible for eighty percent and then the did I say that backwards? The employer's responsible for eighty percent and the employee's twenty percent. However, we do have a few individuals, some legacy employees that through their collective bargaining agreement have smaller percentages like twelve to fifteen. And again, the position, the city's always taking the position that we would deal with those through attrition. Because of that, we have some individuals that don't pay that twenty percent. We're asking that you move forward with exempting us from that eighty-twenty, and there's a resolution that follows with that. And that's in line with what the city has done previously for several years.
Thank you. It says here, budget impact, can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. It was a year or two ago, we actually joined a pool for insurance rates versus us going out with individual company for a fully insured program. We, and by joining this pool, essentially, we are with other municipalities of our size, school districts that have allowed us to save some significant amount of money. In fact, if you look at what we were gonna pay for rates several years ago, even with our increase that we're anticipating this year, we would be less than what we would have been paying two or three years ago. So moving to the West Michigan pool has been a good move for the city.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a recommendation to approve resolution two zero two four dash seventeen, a resolution to adopt the annual exemption option as set forth in Public Act one fifty-two, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved.
Support. Have a motion by council member Chaney Huggit, supported by council member Underhill. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign, motion carries. That brings us to item twelve D, liquor control commission banquet facility permit application, Schuler's Restaurant, Inc.
Mayor, if I may, may I request to be recused from this agenda item as it's been submitted by my employer?
Any comment? I'll make a motion to recuse Joe Karen for this item.
Support.
Have a motion by council member Wolfersberger, supported by council member Gates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You are recused. Who's gonna be speaking?
I think I'll take this one.
Okay.
As council member Karen indicated, we've been asked by Schuler's Restaurant to approve a banquet facility permit application on their behalf. Essentially, they have a an existing license and with their new development in the Dreamers Facility, they're looking to add this banquet facility. As part of that process, I ask, we'll go before city council to make sure that we recommend that that move forward. So there's a resolution from the state of Michigan that we'd be asking you to approve.
Is this an extension from Schuler's to do a banquet?
Correct. It's actually piggybacks on their existing license, yes.
So it's not a new license?
Not a new license per se.
Any other questions?
It still qualifies as on-premise, even though it's block away.
That's my, my understanding. Again, if you want to follow the MLCC stuff, you can get lost in a fog pretty quickly. But this was what the guidance that they gave us that they needed to have on hand and submit to the state of Michigan.
That's great. Okay, thanks. No further question or discussion. I'll take a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash sixteen, authorizing the MLCC banquet facility permit application or banquet facility permit for Schuler's Restaurant, Inc. In their nineteen oh nine event venue located at one twelve North Eagle Street.
Moved.
Have a motion by council member Wolfersberger, supported by council member Traver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Brings us to item twelve E, directional boring for a major site electric distribution extension. Kevin?
Good evening. The city is constructing municipal water and wastewater facilities designed to serve the major campus west of the intersection of Michigan Avenue and C Drive. We don't currently have electric service to that site, so we've been developing a plan to extend service to the municipal water and wastewater facilities there. From a point approximately where the MDOT offices, they're on the south side of West Michigan Avenue, out to the site of these water and wastewater facilities. The distribution feeder will be placed underground under I sixty-nine and for quite a distance past that, actually, all the way down past Bear Creek Farm. And there's a lot of electric, overhead electric infrastructure in place between those two points as well as telecommunications. And so this was the best way to try to avoid conflict with those other utilities. So transformers for the facilities we purchased last fall, November. Earlier this year, you authorized the purchase of underground cable and overhead conductor. All of the other materials have been ordered and are on their way or already here. The directional boring of the conduit for the underground portion of the project is the last remaining significant item. We advertised for bids for this work and received four bids. Three of the bids were between four hundred and eighty-six thousand roughly to about five hundred and fifty thousand. The bid of Kent Power was two point nine million dollars, so three of the four bids were relatively close with the low bid being from J Rank Electric of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And it's our recommendation that you award the bid for the directional boring to J Rank.
Thank you. Any questions by counsel?
Kevin, so we are, you know, we're not supplying electricity to the Ford facility, but so at this time, this is simply to establish our electric department's presence on the west side of I sixty-nine and also to feed our facilities for water and wastewater. Thank you.
Is there a timeframe when this is gonna take place?
Well, as far as the deadline for it, we have to have everything completed by the end of January of next year. We're still waiting on some of the materials. The transformers are supposed to be here in late July. Some of the underground cable also at that time. So, but we can start the directional boring sooner and then pull that conductor or cable in when it arrives, so. And the overhead portion of the line west of the Bear Creek Farm there, our staff will do that. And they will be working on that as soon as we can.
Okay.
So you'll start seeing some activity out there before too long.
Any other questions?
I have one, so I, I, I think the Ford facility is gonna be taken care of by consumers, but being that that is city land out there than any other development in that area, we're able to require it to be city power that they use, and so potentially we could recoup those investments in the future for, okay, thank you.
That I'll take a motion to approve the major electric distribution extension directional boring bid to J Rank Electric of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion by council member Gates. And seconded by council member Traver. Roll call vote, please.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Berzberger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggit.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to item fourteen, public comment on non-agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes on non-agenda items. Anybody wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Sebring, Fredonia Township. Once again, the mega site Blue Oval Meta, this whole cattle thord that you're, you all are enabling is part of the Chinese Communist inci- incentive called handcuff. This is real. And handcuff is to handcuff the US to them under energy rights. They own eighty percent of the solar panels, eighty percent of the batteries. They're gonna make us dependent on them, let alone the crops in my area. They get eighty percent of each crop that comes out of our farms, by the way. And, woo, sorry. Did you know that this communism, more people have died under communism rather than in any war? Did you realize that many people were killed and tortured under communism and you're bringing it right to our backyard? This is a security risk. I am serious. It is a security risk. You're putting us all in danger, okay? No more money to the CCP or whoever, the communists. Like I said before, this is all orchestrated by the World Economic Forum, the CCP, parts of UN, and all the people that enabled them to take over our country. This is a security risk, and you will be loading seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water per day infused with lithium into this town. And I'm not joking, those are the proper specs. This is a security risk. I wish you would defend us and not accommodate the communist stuff anymore, please! What is wrong with you people? Do you realize you're gonna destroy our quaint little town and put a Chinese military in our backyard? Please get on Epic Times, Crossroads, MTD, look at the real truth behind the news, not the propaganda that the Chinese Communist Party owns because they do own Hollywood and our news.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Overley. I'm address is fifty-five, twenty-six, old US twenty-seven. And I wanted to come up and introduce myself tonight as the District Six Commission candidate for August. Currently, I'm the DeConcha Township Supervisor. I've been the supervisor for the last twelve years down there. And so I can talk to anybody from everything, from two oh one sites to four twenty-five agreements. I know all that stuff. We've done that stuff down there. As far as circumstances took me to DeConcha, I grew up in Marshall, went to Marshall schools here. Am still involved in Marshall to some degree. For the past twenty years, I've sat on the Marshall Area Ambulance Firefighters Authority Board of Directors here. So have still had some interest and involvement in what's going on in Marshall, and so I would appreciate your vote in August, and I know Marshall still has a word-of-mouth advertising. I won't be spending thousands and thousands of dollars on advertising, but I would appreciate people's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? You had your hand up first.
Hi, Kelly Isaac, three two one North Liberty, Marshall, Michigan. I am currently reading the Open Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-six. I, first, I want to thank the city for fixing the park. That was awesome. Good idea. And I'm gonna do the good things. I, I do want to object to pesticide spraying on the city curbs. Many people have animals. And actually, I'm going after this meeting to help someone put down their animal. So these are pets, and that stuff gets into their paws, they lick it and it kills them. If we can come up with an organic way to remove that, the weeds, let's, let's do that because it's hurting the animals and also gets in the water. But back to the Open Meetings Act. Just happened to pick up this directory and you know, Michigan State Representatives, Senators, State Administrative Departments, county government, all the elected officials. And I, having it in like this is interesting, Board of Commissioners. And then there's what, city and townships, of course, and villages. And then there's a lot of these appointed boards and commissions, and it goes on, and we all have them. All public bodies have those boards and commissions. They bring what they feel is best, and they present it to the, to the council. And then you make your decision according to what they represent or what they, they're, they're the ones that do the research. You couldn't possibly research all aspects of the city, and I understand that. My issue is, those need to be on the website. It's part of the Open Meetings Act. You're a public body, and that should be done. Thank you for putting the historical minutes on the website. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Angela White cell, one nineteen West Michigan Avenue, Marshall, Michigan. Just have two quick comments. If, and I can stay after if someone can, can fill me in. I'm looking for one, an update on the alley parking project by the library to see what the plan is for that since work has not started. The work that did get done looks fabulous. Just wondering about the next phase. The second thing is a safety concern that I brought up previously about the connection where the alley behind those businesses, Schuler's on the south at Eagle Street. There's a blind spot there, and the stop sign is quite a ways back from the intersection. If we could possibly get a convex safety mirror so pedestrians can see around that corner and folks driving in the alley can see the pedestrians that are right there. That would be terrific, and they're under three hundred bucks. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Still Barry Wayne Adam, still six twenty-two West Green Street. Continuing with Rebecca's tirade, we should be very careful about these agendas that were pushed on us to try to modernize the sanctity of nature. But this Thursday, June sixth, will be a significant day in the progression of these events concerning the megamess. Part of appeals is gonna hear the committee's appeal. The committee's issues are sound. They are of a constitutional level which will necessitate a de novo review standard by the appeals court. The the only aspect of the progression of events that is now suspect is the fact that the supposed random poll of judges at the Court of Appeals includes two judges who were appointed by Whitmer. And we know this is all part of Whitmer's agenda. She is operating as a factotum for the World Economic Forum and the Chinese Communist Party. The United States has been conquered commercially. And all the Uh, and all the legalistic theatrics are part of the process of slowly handing over uh control of what should be uh under the control of Americans over to the Chinese. And you should be worried about that. But all this stuff is being reviewed in the criminal complaint, which is still under review by Michigan State Police and Attorney General's Office.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members. I am Matt Saxton. I live at three or nine fourteen Forest Street, City of Marshall. Uh, just recently purchased that home. Um, I spent my entire life in Calhoun County. I was born and raised in Homer uh for the first quarter of my life. The second quarter of my life, I lived out in Penfield. Uh, and I chose to move to Marshall to spend the third and fourth quarter of my life, um, which I hope is a long time. But I am here this evening to announce my candidacy for the six district county commissioner. Uh, I served the sixth dis- district and the entire county for twenty-seven years in the sheriff's office. The last eight as the elected sheriff of Calhoun. Uh, I have a strong background in county government, which is vastly different than local state and municipal government. Um, but in my current position, I only left the sheriff's office to become the CEO and executive director of the Michigan Sheriff's Association. So I currently work for the eighty-three elected sheriffs of the state of Michigan. I work in Lansing every day uh and have a close contact with all the state legislature um as well as the federal government, let, our representatives in the federal government. So I feel that I have a lot to offer uh county as a commissioner. And I am not running for county commissioner within the agenda. Um, this county has given me so much through the twenty-seven years that I served the county. I now feel I have the time back to give to the county and that's purely the reason I'm running. I want to do what's right for the people of the sixth district and Calhoun County. So I would appreciate a vote in uh August as well as in November. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Anyone else wishing to address council on non-agenda items? Being none, uh that brings us to uh item fifteen, council and manager communications.
Sure, uh, I would echo the comment somebody made about uh Kids Kingdom and uh really appreciate staff working on that. I know that uh it was a hot topic on social media for a minute and I, it's wonderful to see uh, you know, city staff responding and coming together to, to make that happen. So uh, thank you for that. Uh, I also wanted to note uh the pride festivities that happened in Marshall recently and are ongoing this month. Um, it's uh, yeah, we, we, we are an inclusive city and I, I love to see um moments where we can celebrate the fact that uh everybody is, is welcome and appreciated in, in Marshall. So I was very happy to see that. That's all I have today.
Thank you. What did we tonight? Thanks.
Nothing further, thank you.
Just a reminder, this weekend on Saturday is the Oklon Color Run downtown uh Marshall and then throughout Marshall. And we have over nine hundred people signed up, so it's gonna be a big event. But again, just a reminder that Michigan Avenue will be closed um from AM on Saturday till about two PM on Saturday.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, echo uh comments about the, the great work that city staff did with the Kids Kingdom. Uh, it really looks phenomenal. Thank you very much. Uh, second, I have an announcement. Um, it's my great pleasure to announce that I will be running to be the next mayor of Marshall. Uh, it's been my honor to have served as Award One Councilmember for these past six years. In my time on city council, I've worked with my fellow council members, city manager, city staff to solve budget challenges, several of them. Helped to complete two enterprise fund deficit elimination plans and ensured transparency in city operations. I've also served as the Chair of the Northeast Neighborhood Improvement Authority, working to bring new housing development to Marshall. The new houses that have been built on Forest Street and the coming houses on Man Road are testament to the success of this development tool. We continue to work with the county and the state to get the former State Farm property developed and I'm hopeful that we will see success there soon. I've also served as a member of the zoning board of appeals and as a county, as city council liaison for the planning commission. These positions have given me insights and experience with planning, zoning and development that will help me to have informed discussions as the Marshall area jobs, opportunity and recreation campus take shape and any future development options seek to make Marshall their home. In Marshall, we love our history, but we find ourselves at a critical moment in the future of our city. Ford Blue Oval Battery Park, Michigan, will bring many opportunities for Marshall, but as with any change, it must be managed to ensure that we will have a net positive impact on our community. It will be up to the next mayor to continue to work with Marshall's residents, businesses, elected officials, schools and nonprofit organizations to provide our community's vision and goals for Ford to become a valuable member of this community. It is time for us to show Ford that they are welcome here and that together we are excited about the future of Marshall. One of my top priorities as mayor will be our city parks. For years, our parks have suffered as we have struggled to fund needed maintenance tasks and badly needed upgrades. As new revenues become available, I will work to focus those revenues on the needs in our parks. Another priority will be improving our recreation options for Marshall residents of all ages. A vibrant and active community like Marshall deserves to have a robust list of activities that the whole family can enjoy. And I believe these goals can be accomplished while also maintaining the financial health of the city budget. Having worked in IT for nearly thirty years now, I have managed and worked on over one hundred projects, many with multimillion dollar budgets. Being responsible for not just the budget, but also the results has trained me to constantly gather information and feedback to bring forward the best solutions possible. My commitment to the city of Marshall is that I will be just as dedicated to ensuring the best solutions and results possible in every aspect of whatever comes next for this community that I love. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time on city council and I would be honored to have your vote for mayor on November fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Nothing tonight for me. Thank you.
City manager?
Uh, just one comment on Kids Kingdom. I want to thank the uh, the city director team for the idea and the inspiration on that. And then, of course, the entire city team for coming together and doing all that hard work, getting that paint put on that structure. Um, it, it is a great playground and needs to be uh cared for. So we look forward to continuing that level of care uh in the future. Thank you.
City clerk?
Nothing for me today.
Thank you. Um, with that being said, uh it is no surprise that I will not be running for mayor next uh term. Um, so um doesn't mean I've given up all my political aspirations at this point, but uh I do fully support Scott and his endeavors. Um, worked with him over the last four years and, and known and trusted his opinions and, and thoughts and his ability to think things through. So, yes, sir, we'll be working together to get you elected, sir. Um, I do also want to thank those that attended the memorial service um last Monday. Uh, great turnout and, and the respect shown for our veterans and, and just want, you know, you see that town spirit is still alive and well. And uh so Joe and, and his corvette during the parade and it was nice to see us in Valverde as well. Thank you. Um, I have nothing further and that brings us to item sixteen A, which is our closed session um for the city manager review. Take a motion to move to closed session under pursuant to section eight A of the Open Meetings Act to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of an employee if the named employee requests a closed hearing, which he has. So moved?
Support.
I have a motion by council member Wolfers Burger, supported by council member Karen. Roll call vote, please.
Member Underhill?
Yes.
Member Wolfers Burger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Motion carries, your honor.
Thank you. At that time, um, when we come back out, there may be post-close session action to consider a potential action. I am following the closed session um under seventeen A, so thank you. Go to closed session. Recording. Take a motion to come back in open session for item seventeen A, city manager employment agreement. Karen, supported by council member Wolfers Burger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to item seventeen A, city manager employment agreement. Um, we just had a closed session and reviewed the city managers' um review and with that, excuse me. We're getting there. Is it in here? So with that, um, I want to get a motion to approve the contract um presented to the city manager, which is a group um discussed with council members uh to include on top of that um retroactive to February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, which will also include a twenty-five hundred dollar bonus. Um, that was originally offered to the city manager but never fulfilled. So moved?
Support.
I have a motion by council member Wolfers Burger, supported by council member Karen. Roll call vote, please.
Member Underhill?
Yes.
Member Wolfers Burger?
Very much, yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Absolutely, yes.
Member Karen?
Of course, yes.
Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Hundred percent, yes.
Motion carries, your honor.
Uh, Derek, your job well done, sir. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And supported.
By council member Gates, supported by council member Chaney Huggett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.